Yeah.
Yeah.
Where did you get it?
Oh.
It's in the ass city.
That's what we do.
It's a gay decision. It's a gay decision. You come watch the baseball games this season?
Because I'm right down that alley and I had to go and play.
It's in our alley.
Yeah.
Well, no, if they check.
So you bring it.
You got a poll.
Oh, that's a given.
If Big City has it, you should be able to get it easy.
Yeah, I'm surprised that they didn't. You're buck up.
I had to talk to three people.
What is good work for you, though?
They took a lot of these, but we didn't really even ask for it because we didn't think it was in White City Alley and it opens and everything. They get out of the store, it's supposed to be. It was an able to.
Right now, we don't really need it, but it's good to know it's there. It's there. We can't get it.
The reason I like most is the security system because it's, I never have issues with the cameras and the ICs on that, whatever things.
Yeah.
I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Ratone City Commissioners to order. Yes, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigarda.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo. And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Here.
Shall please join me and part your audience.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. See everyone out tonight. A couple announcements before we get going. All city offices will be closed this Monday, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, in honor of President's Day. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, six p.m. here in the chambers. And Mr. Messis, do we have new employees to introduce?
Mayor and Commission, we do not have any new employees at this time.
Alrighty. So moving on to item five, items from citizens present. Anyone wishing to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda may do so at this time. If you're here to speak on something on the agenda, please wait till that item comes up. Sure. And if you would please state your name and...
My name is Kenneth Sigurd. I moved here to Raton back, uh, back in May. I love this town. The reason that I'm here today was I was made aware that I missed the last meeting about the casinos and I just wanted to voice some of my concerns about that. Uh, I grew up four and a half hours north of here in Cheyenne, Wyoming. I spent the last thirty years in Las Vegas, Nevada. I worked in the casino industry for a little over a decade. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned that, uh, there can be negative impacts to the community that people aren't aware of. I'm, I mean, I know that people have read reports and they've seen reports, but a lot of those reports go underreported as far as the crime increases that will happen when you bring in a casino, as far as the mental health issues that will come into the community. Uh, when I first moved to Las Vegas, uh, I purposely moved on the outskirts of town into a town called Summerlin, and at the time it was the fastest growing and nicest community in the country. Uh, the reason that that was the nicest area in the valley was because casinos were not allowed out in that part of the valley. Later on, the city commission out there in that area changed that and they started building casinos and the crimes started going through the roof, burglaries, suicides, drugs, you name it, across the board. I, I, I fear that a lot of people in this town, um, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I fear that a lot of people in this town are looking back to the past of the racetrack and thinking the casino will be like the racetrack and you couldn't be more wrong about that. Uh, the racetrack was very much like, uh, the Cheyenne Frontier days where I grew up north of here. It would bring people into the town. They would spend money on a place to stay, entertainment, food, lodging, a place to, to trailer their horses to and have their animals taken care of, and it brought money into the commu- community. A casino unfortunately will take people in the community and it will highlight problems that they may not even know that they have at this point, and it will drain money from the community. The one thing that I do know about the casino industry, the house always wins. I know that I don't have a lot of pull here. I've only been here for, for about nine months, but the reason that I came to Raton was because Raton is a jewel in the rough and I see tons of potential in this town, but I don't think, I don't believe and I, well, I know firsthand, the casino is not the way to go. I just wanted to voice my concerns on that. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move into the business portion of the agenda. Item six A, deliberate and act on approval of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes. Have a chance to go over them in your packet?
Motion to approve the twenty-three, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes?
A second. A motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Turn to further discussion. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B. A report, City of Raton, Continuum and subcontractors, the New Hope Family Counseling and Youth Heartline program updates for restorative justice girl circle and boys council. Mr. Messis.
Mayor and Commission, per your request, we have a report from organizations under the juvenile justice grant. I invite them forward at this time to just discuss their activities and their accomplishments. Do you please come forward?
Hi, my name is Felice Medina. I'm with Youth Heartline. I'm the community programs director. And so we have the, um, funding to do boys council and girls circle, um, groups in the schools here. So, um, currently we are doing, um, whole classes, so we get a referral from the schools. It's for anything from, um, bullying, truancy, mental health issues, um, things like that, especially things that have been exacerbated, um, due to the pandemic and the kids not being in school and now going back into that environment. So we do whole classes, um, the boys meet with one facilitator, with male facilitators, and the girls meet with female facilitators and they do, um, weekly sessions. We're currently doing groups, um, in sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth grade. We meet with sixth graders on Fridays. We do the whole entire sixth grade class, so that's just one group. Those are pretty big groups. Um, we prefer to have smaller groups, but that was what was, um, worked with the school schedule. Um, and then for seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth grade, we meet with, um, three groups. Um, the class is broken up into three groups, three sessions, three, we, sorry. It's hard, it gets confusing. So, across three periods. So like Mondays, we do seventh or ninth grade, seventh grade. So, um, those are much smaller groups. And so those are usually between like five to maybe twelve students in each of those groups. In January, we saw two hundred and ninety-three students in the schools. Um, in February and March are gonna be really heavy. Um, we have a lot of groups going, so weekly we'll do, um, a total of twenty-six groups a week so that we're covering, uh, sixth through tenth grade. Um, the facilitators have seen a lot of progress with the students they are meeting with, especially the students that they started with last semester. They did, um, they started with some seventh and eighth grade classes and they're continuing with those classes this semester. And, um, the facilitators are all reporting that, you know, they've really developed relationships with these students. And they're ga- gaining skills, they're getting a lot of self-confidence. They're now able to say like, yeah, I'm really good at art, whereas in the past it was not a thing. They're like, no, I'm not good at anything. I don't have any good skills, qualities, right? So now they're able to like name good qualities they have. They're able to have more coping skills and ways to interact with each other. And then we also have the after-school program, which is a continuation, um, for fifth and sixth graders. And that's, uh, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at the convention center. So it provides some, uh, activities, the same curriculum actually as that's happening in, in school. Is it questions? I don't know. I don't know how this works.
No, fine. Thank you, appreciate the report.
Yeah.
Are there any questions?
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. On, on average, how many people in these groups, each of the groups?
It really, it depends. So like the sixth graders are pretty big groups.
Right.
But ideally, and what is been happening with all the other grades is anywhere from like four at minimum, usually closer to five, to twelve, thirteen is kind of what our mean is, so.
Cool.
It's, yeah. And then one of our facilitators, Andy, is here. I don't know if she wants to speak a little bit. She does, um, seventh and eighth grade, I think. Want to come up?
Sure.
Please, please state your name for the record, please.
My name is Andy Ortega. This is my second year, uh, co-facilitating Girl Circle. I started in December of twenty twenty-two, uh, for CCI and now we are under Youth Heartline. We focus a lot on social emotional learning, um, peers, relationships, and self-esteem. Um, like she said, it is sixth through tenth. I have seventh, eighth, and tenth, and will be starting with sixth this Friday. The way a circle usually looks like is we open with whatever they feel comfortable with. Sometimes it's music, sometimes it's, uh, two truths and a lie. And then we ask them how they are doing, highs and lows, and we give them an opportunity to have a trusted adult to confide in. And we go into our discussion, so some of it is role play, like the different types of labels, the scenarios, and then we discuss and we close. And they usually last fifty minutes in the school. Um, after-school is longer. And, um, the main things that we focus on are how to tell someone you're upset without yelling or arguing, um, what values they look for in a friendship, and mindfulness, uh, using coloring, poem writing, or journaling. Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you for fully enough stuff. I did not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments, questions? Alright, thank you. Whoop, we got someone else?
My name is Angie Ortega. Um, I work for New Hope Family Counseling, which is a private practice agency here in town with just myself. And the opportunity got brought up to be able to apply for the restorative justice program this year, so I applied for it. So this is my first round of, uh, I guess managing that. However, I think about twelve years ago, I was a J-Jack coordinator, so some faces are familiar. Um, and I also had, got to do the restorative justice, boys council, Girl Circle, and all that good stuff. So it's kind of cool that it comes back full circle, so it's pretty exciting. Uh, so like I said, I was a private practice, so kind of had to like hire someone to do some payroll and I'm learning all that good stuff. We're off, we've, this year's really going really great. Um, we're collaborating a lot with Raton High School. Um, they also provided funds to kind of meet us in the middle, to kind of serve some of their purposes and then to serve some of ours too. So what the high school was looking for was our programming, but they also wanted a place to put it. So the high school last year provided a chunk of funding to have what we call a student success center, and it's a place in the high school where the kids can go when they're struggling. Um, they could go for support, things like that, but it's also the place where we do our restorative justice circles. Um, so far, our numbers look beautiful. I'm proud of that. We're doing good. Um, we're required to do a hundred and twenty circles this fiscal year. We've completed ninety-two so far. Uh, two hundred and fifty-two kids have been served so far across the board. I want to add to that, that in addition to that, when we have our restorative circles, a lot of the other people that come to those circles include sometimes probation, juvenile probation. Um, we definitely always have the high school principal, she's there, the other social workers usually there, the parents, and this is bridging a major gap. So we kind of are the next person in line for kind of like, I don't want to say discipline, but if an event happens at the school, two kids get in a fight, rather than necessarily going straight to an out-of-school suspension, they send them to restorative justice and we get all the players involved and everybody sitting at the table and all the players there, as far as the, the offender and the victim or whatnot, they all have to take accountability for their part. The other part that we do is we'll walk them through what should have been different, how could you have avoided the situation? And then the more important part, how can you make it up? So a big part of the program is to repair the harm that you caused. So rather than going into juvenile system, we're hopeful that we teach them, here's what this looked like, it didn't go well, um, let's try to not do it the next time, and even more than that, repairing the relationships that got damaged. So the cool part about having all the parents included, parents are getting to see that there's a whole team of people trying to help their kiddos. So it's, it's, it's going pretty cool. It's fun to watch. It's really cool to see. Uh, we've done seven circles for JPO specifically, three of those were out of town. Um, let's see. Okay, and I, I brought a few little helpers with me, so, um, I'm gonna bring Andy back up. She's our main restorative justice facilitator. We lost another facilitator who stopped, be, not because she didn't like it, but because she wanted to go on with her college career. So we're hoping Andy's gonna keep going with her college stuff too and stay with us. Uh, so we've got Andy, she's a facilitator, and then we brought two lovely little faces here just to give you a fast little spill of their experience with the success center and the circles. So I'm gonna turn it over. I'll let you introduce the boys when you get there.
Okay. Hi again, I'm Andy Ortega. I am also the restorative justice facilitator. I started again in two thousand twenty-two, December. I worked at RIS and RHS and I found that working at RHS, I have a better rapport with those students. I do it with the intermediate school as well, but I feel like they have somebody to confide in at RHS. Um, so we did, we transitioned from restorative circles to community circles because of everyone that is involved in those circles. With the way a circle looks like, we'll have them come in, we will introduce each other, we will set guidelines, honesty, take turns speaking, respect, and confidentiality. What's said in that room stays in that room and it does not leave, so it allows them to open up and take accountability for all their actions. The questions that we ask are what happened, what were the effects, was anyone harmed, physically or emotionally? We ask who is responsible in both parties and how will it be repaired and what do you need? We focus a lot on what do you need because they understand that they could have asked for help from an adult. They could have went to, um, they could have reported on the Stop It app or found better ways to go instead of whatever action they took. And then collectively, we come up with a plan. We do not sign off on it until the student is okay with it and they are able to follow through with it, and then everyone in that circle keeps them accountable. They check in, me specifically, I will follow up and say, how are things going? And I will relay that to Ms. Starr. Um, we have five Rs that we ask them to follow up with, which is relationships, respect, responsibility, repair, and reintegration. Relationships focus on the harm caused amongst the relationship. We ask that they have mutual respect for one another and to hopefully gain it back with each other. To take responsibility and to repair and resolve those feelings of anger or revenge from harm and help regain respect for themselves and others. Um, as far as the student success center, I think that is a room that I will have the boys elaborate on, but I think having it in the high school has opened the door for them to go to a safe space, um, to de-escalate instead of exploding and they have somebody, an advocate, which would be myself for them, that could relay that information to a teacher or a principal that they are struggling. And I do not disclose any information they tell me. I will simply say they are struggling and they said it is okay to confide in you and let you know that they need some extra help. Um, I will also talk to the teachers on their behalf and meet them halfway, and we do include teachers in some circles as well. With that being said, I'm gonna hand it off to the students and they will elaborate more on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Dimitri Azgum.
I'm Nicholas Sunville.
And today we're gonna go over like how, how restorative has helped us. So for me, restorative has helped me repair friendships and relationships with people. Um, it helps me with my anger management and, you know, if I get really stressed in class, you know, there's a place to go for that. And, you know, like Ms. Andy said, the, you know, she keeps everything in that room, everything that's said to her stays with her. So it gives me a trusted adult in the school. I don't really trust a lot of people, so, um, it helps knowing that there's a person I could talk to about it, you know, problems or whatever else I'm having in school. That's all I have to say for that, if you have anything to add.
Um, the restorative room for me has helped me become more comfortable going to the high school, 'cause before I was really never really fond of going there. I was really, I never had a safe place. I wasn't comfortable being at that high school. I had a lot of problems and it helped me be able to let them go and let me gain myself back so I can go back to the high school, knowing that I can go there, I can do my best, I can achieve my life goals that I have set for me. Because the issue I've struggled with for me is that my life is going a thousand miles an hour and that room, it lets me calm down, cool down, and just take a break and just to get it off my chest and get it off my mind. So then that lets me focus better and keep my focus on my schoolwork so I can succeed and begin to not get stuck and just give up. Because I had a huge problem with stopping and giving up. I wouldn't continue or try to push. I would just stop and give up. I'd, I'd shut down. So that room, it was, it was a real big change for me so that I could get it together and start to do what I thought was impossible for me before. So it really changed my view of the impossible to the possible, and that's my view on the room.
Very nice, very nice. I want to just thank you, boys, for coming and sharing that with us, and I gotta give you a big hand for, for what you've done, so. Alright, thank you. Thank you so much.
Any questions or?
Any questions?
This was great, yeah.
No, it was great. Appreciate it. Any adult programs?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item C, public hearing, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, DBE goals for Cruzfield Municipal Airport. Mr. Messis.
Mayor and Commission, this is a requirement that the city establish goals for the airport to receive FAA grants. The current report is out of date and we to come in compliance with this business report so we can continue to benefit from FAA grants. We will be submitting a new three-year report in September of this year, but in the meantime, this will, report will bring us current. As you can see, we already are involved in the many, in many of the projects listed. The disadvantaged business enterprise is a federal goal that certain number of contractors be disadvantaged businesses. There are no city funds associated with this hearing or this act. We were seeing public comment tonight and I have published a, uh, public notice, uh, that, uh, documents will be available for public inspection and we will also accept comments for the next, uh, forty-five days. And here's a copy of the public notice that we put out.
Alrighty. Like Mr. Messis says, this is a requirement. Are you going to post along with that some of the projects that are listed or?
Yes, we, we have all the paperwork available.
Great. So if you're interested, it'll be posted out there and out front.
It is on the website as well.
It's on the website, so any comments or questions at this time? This is a public hearing.
Good evening. Dusty Longwell with the fixed-based operator at the airport. Um, I think the, uh, future construction looks great. I do recommend that there may be a change order for, uh, the upcoming Taxway Bravo reconstruction for the South Apron parking area to be reconstructed as well, whether that includes a, a straight, uh, state grant, um, since equipment's already gonna be there. That's probably the worst part of our, the airport is Taxway Bravo and the South Apron parking area. Um, as well as that, I think it'd be a good idea to have some striping redone on the Taxway Alpha. It hasn't been done, uh, four or five years maybe, um, but they're getting a little faded. The striping on the runways are still in good shape, so I don't think that's an issue. Everything else, I think it's, it's going good. We need to get the, uh, electrical fault, that's the number one, I think, on our list.
Cool.
Very good.
The parking area, what was the issue with it?
It's ravelling, um, you know, it's causing chips and pillars, stuff like that, you know, that can lead to fatigue in the prop, cracks, and unfortunately it could cause the loss of propeller in flight.
So the surface is deteriorating?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The only other question I had on this, in this report, geographical area one, is that the state of Albuquerque or what have they calling that area? It's not really identified as what part of the state they're referring to.
I believe what I read on there was kind of the northeast quadrant, rural area, Clayton.
Well, they called that five.
Oh, okay. Maybe I'm incorrect.
But they are alluding to the fact that most of the, uh, contractors for this come from this other area.
Commissioner, I don't have an answer, but I will get back with you.
Okay.
On that.
And we've been, you know, this is part of the effort so we can continue to get grants and that, and we've been very successful in the past in getting these projects funded for little or no cost to the city many times, so it's, it's well worth it. Any other comments, questions? Alrighty. So this will be posted outside, it was also on the website, if you want to take a look at it. So item D is deliberate and act on twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, DBE goals for Cruzfield Municipal Airport. Mr. Messis.
Mayor and Commission, this is to, uh, act on the hearing to, um, agree that, uh, we're moving forward with, uh, this report.
Any comments, questions? There, can a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt twenty twenty-two, twenty-four, DBE goals for Cruzfield Municipal Airport.
Let's take a. A motion and a second to adopt the twenty twenty-two, twenty, twenty-four, DBE goals for Cruzfield Municipal Airport. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, introduction of an ordinance amending the Raton Code of Ordinances, section ninety-one dot one-five, adoption of fire codes. Section ninety-one dot one-five, Adoption of Fire Codes. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this ordinance updates all codes to the twenty-twenty-one edition of the International Fire Code. These regulations govern conditions hazardous to property from fire and hazardous materials and explosions and will be updated in our Code of Ordinances.
Alrighty, as Mr. Mestes said, this is just the introduction of the ordinance at this time and it's to bring everything up to the new, the latest version of the international code, so. Any comments, questions? Entertained a motion to introduce the ordinance.
I will move to introduce the ordinance amending the Raton Code of Ordinances ninety-one point fifteen, Adoption of Fire Codes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce the ord- ordinance amending the Raton Code of Ordinances, Section ninety-one fifteen, Adoption of Fire Codes. Is there any further discussion? Does, can we have a roll call on this one, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F, deliberate and act on purchase of restroom container from Creative Recreational Designs utilizing CES Contract Number Two Zero Two Three Dash One Six Dash C One Two Three Dash A L L. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, um, as you know, we received a Quality of Life Grant and to, um, use this Quality of Life Grant, we are purchasing bathroom stalls for, uh, the ball field. We are looking at spending a total of sixty thousand four hundred and sixty-three. If there are any specific questions on these, I believe, um, you have a picture of these in front of you. This is what you're purchasing. And on the flip side, this is what it looks like on the inside. And again, we, this is for a cost of sixty thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
Any questions, comments? This is for the Little League fields?
That's what I was gonna ask. It's for the Little League, but not the softball?
That's later.
I think, especially given the timeline of expending those funds by the end of June, it's a super tight timeline. I think they look really different.
Yeah, this was brought up during the municipal league meeting. A lot of communities are having times meeting in this deadline. So, yeah, we're in a rush here.
And they look good, see?
Yeah. I do like the awning, just as a comment.
Any other comments, questions? Entertained a motion.
I will move to approve purchase of restrooms, restroom container for, from Creative Recreational Designs utilizing CES Contract Number Twenty Twenty Three Dash Sixteen Dash C One Two Three Dash A L L.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate and act on purchase of ball field bleacher system from DGJD Inc. Utilizing extended pricing from GSA contract GS zero three F zero one seven five X. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a GSA contract to buy, um, five-row aluminum bleachers, five units each, and a ten-row aluminum bleacher at one, um, unit each for a total of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-two. And of course, these will be a nice upgrade to our fields.
And these are coming from the same funds as the grant?
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. These are Quality of Life Grants.
Just so you all know, it's, it's all come from the same kitty.
I just have a question on, what will you be doing with the old bleachers?
I'd like to call forward our Director of Public Works, Jason Phillips. And he'll give you a little bit more of the logistics.
Thanks.
Mayor Protem. The ten-row bleacher setup will be housed at the ladies softball field on an existing concrete pad. Some of these will be used to replace outdated wood bleachers that we are not rebuilding this winter. And, um, the extras will remain in city stock. Some will go to Bon Home Park, some will be situated by the soccer field, but nothing will be dispersed of. And, um, we do loan several sets of bleachers to the Supercross each year. The aluminum bleachers are not transportable, so we would anticipate that we would still use those to supplement, groundstand at the Supercross event. But we'll keep everything we have and just add to it.
Questions, comments?
Motion to, uh, approve the purchase of ball fields bleacher system from DJ, DGJD Inc. Utilizing extended price from GSA contract GS oh three F oh one seven five X.
Now, motion and a second to purchase the bleachers. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate and act on purchase of hygiene pods for the women's softball complex. Utilizing GSA contract number four seven Q S M D two zero R zero 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 one. Rick?
Mayor and Commissioner, yet this is another Quality of Life Grant and, um, hygiene pods are a fancy name for restrooms. And these will be over at the women's ball field. Uh, we're getting two pods for a cost of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and eleven cents. And again, this comes under the Quality of Life Grant.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's my understanding that we're having these because we can't get the others in the, in the shipping timelines? Just so everyone's aware that we're not thinking less of the softball fields than other fields.
I could address that if you'd just like.
Please.
Mayor and Commissioner, originally our intention was to purchase two shipping containers. Um, right now, we have zero restrooms in use and porta-potties. Uh, girls softball is the first sport that happens and we have three fields situated there. The shipping container contains three restroom stalls and one ADA stall. The hygiene pods are self-contained bathrooms. So the thought is they are in stock, ready to purchase and get here ASAP. Um, we would have architected construction under an existing contract, porta pad, set these and probably have them hopefully able for our young ladies to use during this season. Personally, I like the setup of these better, but, um, we'll essentially have four bathroom stalls available at the minor and major league field and two for the ladies. But, uh, ultimately, the lead time on the shipping container will barely get us here before Little League season and the expiration of Quality of Life. The second one would have never met the deadline, so this was the next best scenario. And of course, softball is near and dear to my heart, so I would never leave those ladies shortchanged in any way, shape, or form.
One more question. Is there a plan? Are we, is it, is it part of an MOU to have them cleaned by a certain organization or what's the plan to keep them tidy?
We will always pitch them when needed. The thought is when Little League's in season, coaches will have access, the buildings will be locked and that they'll help. But, um, we'll, we'll do our best to kind of keep up to where shorthanded as it is, but we'll, we'll do it softball the same way. I mean, we don't ask for much in return from the schools for the use of our fields, so. I mean, their coaches or staff would do it and I'm sure parents would volunteer for having their daughters ever have to use a porta potty again. I mean, I clean them all season myself if that's what we gotta do, but.
And these are self-contained? They're not?
Self-contained. They are twelve-hundred-pound capsules that will set with the loader, have loader forks. They'll connect permanently, well, not permanently, they'll connect to the sewer system. They will have the equivalent of an RV plug that powers them, that RPS will help us provide. And they will have potable water. Inside each stall, you'll have a, uh, dual-use toilet facility, a sink, soap dispenser, and a, uh, mirror and hand dryer. So they should be an own one.
Lux Lab, the?
That's the Lux Lab.
The?
The others?
Container is?
The container are pretty much similar setup. One four-inch sewer discharge, multiple RV connections for electrical to power the devices in it. And they are, uh, self-contained in the same way. They may be paper towel dispensers and not the electric hand dryers in that one, though.
Will there be, uh, lighting?
Yes, lighting and, uh,
Inside now?
Air conditioning. Well, we'll probably have to lean, look to RPS to put maybe street lighting outside of them. Um, they will be lit inside. They do have heating and air conditioning units. The, um, hygiene pods are supposed to be Arctic certified for the temperatures because softball season will dip below freezing from time to time. But, um, my guess is we will probably build a little structure around to kind of clean up the look of the softball facility where they are. And, um, I anticipate that at the end of the season, we will actually bring a loader, gather them up and place them safely at our shop to avoid vandalism. You know, it doesn't make a lot of sense when they're not in use to leave them in harm's way, so.
Cool. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, all.
Entertained a motion.
Motion to approve the purchase of the hygiene pods for the women's softball com- complex using GSA contract four seven Q S M D two zero R zero 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 one.
Motion and a second to approve the purchase of the hygiene pods. Any further discussion among the commissioners? All in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, deliberate and act on designation of resident agent for government liquor license number nine zero zero six. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, uh, the City of Raton, New Mexico is appointing Jason Phillips to act as a resident agent on behalf of the city and to accept services of process for all purposes relating to the sales and service of alcoholic beverages, including orders and notices of the director of the division and to have the power of attorney to exercise full authority, control, and responsibility for the conduct of all business transaction for the city within the state.
Thank you. Looks like everything is in order. Any questions for Mr. Mestes? This allows us to rent the convention center out and hold weddings and such, correct?
Correct.
I will move to approve resident agent for government liquor license number nine zero zero six, to be Jay, Mr. Jason Phillips.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Phillips as our resident agent for government liquor license. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, JP. Item J, deliberate and act on memorandum of understanding between Colfax County and the City of Raton for grant from Colfax County Permanent Healthcare Fund. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is, um, money coming from Colfax County, uh, to the tune of forty thousand dollars. Um, that is coming out of their healthcare fund and we will use it to buy a new defibrillator for one of our ambulances.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the memory, memorandum of understanding between Colfax County and the City of Raton for grant from Colfax County Permanent Healthcare Fund. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the grant, the grant, the memo, the MOU between the County of Colfax and City of Raton. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on Placer Labs Inc. Location, Intelligence, and Foot Traffic Data Software Order Form. Mr. Mestes.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, this is, uh, GRT funds from Economic Development. And this is software that we are going to use for an initial period of two years to, um, track, uh, business coming in, um, Raton and Colfax County and of course, business going out. What I'd like to do at this time is call forward our Director of, um, Community and Economic Development, Malina Heine, to speak a little bit more on the software.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, um, thank you for being here tonight. Um, Placer is a location analytics platform that uses mobile location data um, to provide market intelligence for any physical place in the country. So we can use this data to see who is visiting Raton at any given time and what they're doing. And we can look and see who's leaving and going elsewhere, um, to conduct their business and try to find a way to capture that business and make sure that we can keep it here so people don't have to leave um, and go shopping elsewhere. So, um, it's a very, it's a very powerful, um, very powerful tool. Um, you can use it for any location at any given time. Um, you can look at things like where people live, um, where they work, um, where they're, where they're shopping. Um, it's, the, the data is gathered with, um, with, with by Placer partnering with apps that people use. So if I use the McDonald's app on my phone, you know, and opt into the location services, um, they're not collecting any personal information about me, um, as Malita, but they know that a person is at McDonald's at that given time. So there is no, um, personal identification, um, collected through this app. They only collect the latitude and longitude of the mobile device, so it's really just where that person is at that given time. Um, it is a really powerful tool for us to use to gather data, to present to potential retailers for our communities, employers, um, and to show what opportunities exist here in our community for those businesses. Um, we'll be able to look at leakage, um, which is essentially when people have to go elsewhere to shop, um, or do their business. Um, and, and especially in the cat, retail category or, uh, business category that we currently don't have here. Um, and we'll be able to show how strong our market is for our current business offerings and maybe recruit some other businesses to come in and support what we currently have. And it also helps us to see where visitors are coming from and how to help us, um, use advertising dollars for marketing of events, our other activities that we may offer. Um, so there's a lot, there's a lot of different uses for this. And I'm very excited about having it. Again, none of the information that's collected is personable, personal identifiable information. Um, all the data that's collected is aggravated, aggregated and anonymous. Um, and Placer does not sell or share information about individuals. Um, it's currently being used in Gallup, um, Roswell, Red River, and Santa Fe, and those communities have found it very beneficial. And I know, um, Patricia that works at CCI, she recently went to our tourism conference and heard from other communities that were using Placer. And so she shared that information with me and I said, well, we're thinking about getting it. She's like, it, it'll be great for us. And so I'm really, really excited about, um, this prospect. So, any questions?
Questions, comments?
I have a question. Uh, do you, are you allowed to like filter and ask for specifics? And then are you given like a report?
Yeah, I can get, I can get a, um, I can enter whatever sort of analytics I want to collect um, in, into the place of, Placer platform and then, um, it generates a report that I can print out and share.
But it doesn't tell you what they're buying?
Um, it'll tell you where they, where they are. Um, but there is, I, you know, I think it does show like, you know, your leakage. So if they're not buying shoes here, um, you know, we can, we have a market we can capture.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Well, but are you to be available to other businesses here in Raton?
Yeah, you, anytime you want, we can look at data.
So we can use it for our marketing for?
Yeah, yeah, I can, um, I will be able to, you know, help, you know, come up with, you know, you want to look at certain things and print that out for you to use.
And is it only, uh, captures the data if they've used an app or does it capture it from their credit cards, uh, zip codes as well?
It's from mo, it's from their mobile device. So it's from their, um, their cell phone. Only a tablet if that tablet has mobile, uh, mobile capabilities, so. But I will check on the credit card data because I know that there are some that use that. And I'm not sure if Placer does, but, um.
So it'll be able to allow us to target certain other areas that we know that we're getting a high concentration of GSA from Texas coming into town here with the concentrated?
Right. So if you have a particular weekend, you know, and after the weekend happened, you want to see kind of where people, where people were coming from. We could, you know, geo-fence, which is draw imaginary digital fence around, you know, the Adventure Center and, you know, look and see, you know, who was there, you know, at any given time. So, yeah. But I'm, I'm excited to use it.
So this would be a great tool then for all the organizations that may be putting on events?
Yes.
That they can then report to the city how successful or not their event was in bringing people to town? Because sometimes that's hard to pinpoint.
And it's hard sometimes to know where you want to spend your advertising dollars. You may think people are coming from, you know, Amarillo to an event, but they might be coming from Oklahoma City, you know? So it gives you a good idea where, uh, where those people are coming from. So you're a little bit more targeted and effective.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Ready?
Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to add that I feel that it is extremely important that the city make database decisions and that we- that the city make database decisions and that we are able to collect information not only for Raton, but this software will allow us to maybe look at events in Santa Fe, Pueblo, Clayton, and understand, you know, the dynamics of how people, people are moving around.
It's used in a lot of places, like you said, Santa Fe. I know that North Central is tied into there and use the information from this software, so it gives you a lot of information.
Yeah. They'll be great, great information for us to have, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Marty was raising his hand, I thought he had a question. Just rest. Okay, I would entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve Placer Labs in Location Intelligence Traffic Data Software Order Form.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to accept the Placer app Labs Location Intelligence Foot Data, Traffic Data Software Order Form. Mouthful. Any other comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Item L, deliberate and act on change order for electrical ad for commission chamber upgrade utilizing AVI dash SPL LLC CES two zero two three dash twenty dash C one 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 dash ALL. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a change order for the amount of five thousand four hundred and twelve dollars to the upgrade of this room, and what this change order will do, this is a minor oversight that we had in order to locate each of the electrical outlets, so essentially what we have to do is rewire some of these outlets within the room so we could go ahead and install the new upgrade that was previously approved.
All right, any questions for Mr. Mestes or anyone? Just to kind of fill you in, we are coming into the 21st century here in the convention, the convention, the chambers. With the advent of online meetings and all that now, it's very difficult for five commissioners to sit around one laptop and operate. This is hopefully going to address that to where we can participate, the audience can participate, I believe it'll even help KRTN and that present their meetings and present the meetings online there, so it's a, it's a huge and needed upgrade.
I was excited too, the idea of having, a lot of staff trainings now are remote, and so the staff being able to come in and use that as well will be really great for the city.
Yeah, municipal league is putting on a lot of their trainings now online, and it will make it so much easier and it'll be interactive.
I'll make a motion to act, or accept the change order for electrical ad for commission chamber upgrading utilizing AVI SPL LLC CES twenty twenty three twenty C one eleven all.
Motion and second to approve the change order. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate and act on resolution twenty twenty four oh eight concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal, fifteen twenty one Cedar Street. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, we have four of these issues tonight. We do have to vote on each one of them separately, but I would like to call our code enforcement officer, George Riley Ford, to give you a brief overview of each property. George?
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, City Manager Mestes and Clerk Trahill. I'm here tonight with four, four resolutions on properties that I've worked on for the last two and a half years to try to get clean. And Kevin, if you, if you want to go ahead and go through the slides, and then Mr. Mayor, if you would like to read the resolution after you see the, the slides, there are properties that under advice of council, we've decided to bring forth a resolution to clean these properties for the city of Raton. They're, they're, they're an eyesore for people that come to our city. We have various issues in each one of these properties, so with that said, I'll let you look at the, at the pictures. This is sixteen twenty one Cedar Street. Everybody on the interstate that's getting off to head towards Texas sees this property, and, and, and I know that people say, I wonder if this is the rest of what Raton, New Mexico looks like. So, you could just go on through those, Kevin, if you would. There's pictures there, and actually, we have, we have a, we've had a survey done, and most of this debris and cars and tires and tractors and stuff is on city property. That's a city right away there, it's actually Kiowa Street, and the rest of the stuff is outside of the, the property lines on, on, on New Mexico Department of Transportation property. I don't know, Kevin, if you can show that slide that shows the, the, the Kiowa Street survey?
Yes.
Be the second documentally.
There we go.
That was, this slide was done by, by Shield Survey, and after we've, we've marked the, the markings on the streets, if you drive by and look at it, you'll see that there's, there's just so much stuff, debris and stuff that needs to be removed from this property, and, and it needs to be cleaned. There's also a letter from the, the fire, Raton Fire Emergency Service with regard to We, you can see structures in this picture. There's two of these structures that, they're built without any, any building permit. They're, they're actually unsafe structures that need to come down. This, this carport that this gentleman calls as a carport is actually two by sixes on, on, on grade. It's just, it's just something that we can't have here in our city.
That's the end right there.
That's good, so if you want. With that, if you would like to read the resolution?
I can read the resolution.
I would appreciate it, sir.
All right. Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero eight of resolution concerning a dangerous building or premise and requiring removal. Whereas James R. Urbis, C O Stephen J. Draper own or are in possession of property located at fifteen twenty one Cedar Street, Raton, New Mexico, eight seven seven four zero, and whereas the property record on file with Colfax County Assessor indicates ownership of the property by James R. Urbis, C O Stephen J. Draper, and whereas on or about February sixteenth, twenty twenty three, code enforcement officer George Riley sent a letter to Stephen J. Draper notifying him that the property located at fifteen twenty one Cedar Street, Raton, New Mexico, is in violation of the city of Raton ordinances as they pertain to nuisances, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley did not receive any response to the February sixteenth, twenty twenty three letter, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley sent a first notice dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty three to James R. Urbis care of Stephen J. Draper, notifying him, them of the violation of city ordinances and asking that the owners remedy the situation, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley did not receive any response to the April fourteenth, twenty three, twenty three letter, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley sent another letter dated June first, twenty twenty three, notifying James R. Urbis care of Stephen J. Draper that the property is in violation of the city of Raton ordinances as they pertain to nuisances, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley did not receive any response to the June first, twenty twenty three letter, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley personally inspected the premises and observed an accumulation of rubbish, trash, refuse, litter, junk and other abandoned materials, metals, lumber and other things, unsheltered junk, abandoned vehicles, conditions which provide harborage for rats, mice, snakes and other vermin, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley personally inspected the property and observed buildings or structures which are in a dilapidated condition that are unfit for human habitation are kept in an unsanitary condition that is a menace to the health of people residing in the vicinity thereof or that present a more than ordinarily dangerous fire hazard in the vicinity where it is located, and whereas the city of Raton ordinances provide for remedies and penalties for the violations of its ordinances regulating public, public nuisances and found at section ninety four point zero one to ninety four point nine nine, and whereas New Mexico statutes grant to municipalities such as the city of Raton the power to require the removal of dangerous buildings or debris, see section three dash eighteen dash five NMSA nineteen seventy eight, and whereas pursuant to the statute, a resolution must be passed by the city of Raton governing body and served on the property owner, occupant or agent in charge of the property. Resolve one, that the property owned or occupied by James R. Urbis care of Stephen J. Draper located at fifteen twenty one Cedar Street, Raton, New Mexico, eight seven seven four zero, is hereby declared a dangerous building and/or premises as defined in the city of Raton ordinances and New Mexico statutes. Two, that pursuant to the provisions of statute three dash one eight dash five B, NMSA nineteen seventy eight, a copy of this resolution shall be served on the owner, occupant or agent in charge of the premises. That the, and three, that the owners of record as set forth in this resolution and pursuant to the provisions of section three, statute three dash one eight dash five C, NMSA nineteen seventy eight, shall within ten days of the receipt of a copy of the resolution or of the posting and publishing of a copy of the resolution commence removing the building structure, ruin, rubbish, wreckage or debris, or file a written objection with the municipal clerk, asking for a hearing before the governing body of the municipality. Number four, that the procedure set forth in statute three dash one eight dash five NMSA nineteen seventy eight and statute ninety four point oh one, ninety four point, to ninety four point nine nine of the guy, of the ordinances of the city of Raton shall be adhered to and followed by the city of Raton governing body passed, adopted and approved this thirteenth day of February, twenty twenty four.
If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Riley? Any comments?
It, it appears that everything has been taken care of by date according to the law and that everything is filed. I was just looking at the procedure moving forward.
Yes, ma'am.
The owner appears to have a recourse where they can file with the municipal clerk if they want to protest this.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. They can come before the city commission, and, and we can either move forward or retract the resolution, or they can move to district court if they so desire.
And have these buildings been discussed with the zoning board for anything?
It's not, it's not so much on this particular issue here, some of, some of the stuff is going to go before the zoning board, it's, it's pending before the zoning board now. The rest of it is just stuff that needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, I was just curious because of the stuff that's not on the actual property and stuff.
Right.
And, and doing this, does the, as the process moves forward with the owner of the property, are they, then it depends on what happens, I guess, if they appeal it, but the end goal is for them to clean up the property, is that right?
Yes, and, and it's a step, it's, it's a process. We're asking them to clean the property, and if they don't clean the property, then, then we move forward in a different manner. So, it's all, it's, it's interaction between the city and the, and the individual property owner and how we move forward from this point.
So, if this were to pass tonight, then you would obviously serve this to the property owner. Hopefully, they would begin to clean up the property and, and we would move forward.
Yes, we have that ten, ten day period to determine what we're going to do.
Okay.
And, and at, at that point then, it's up to the property owner to tell us if they're going to clean the property or if they ask for a hearing before the city council or request to go to district court. It, it, the ball's in their court at that point, and we have ten days time limit to watch and see what happens, so.
Any other comments, questions?
Is there a time limit on when it has to absolutely be cleaned up, or are you giving them like another thirty days and then another thirty days to make some progress?
No, I, I think we'll address that with, with, with council. If, if the property's not being cleaned, we'll seek advice of, of our legal council, and we'll give the people plenty of time to clean the property. We're not, we're not trying to overwhelm anybody. We've been two and a half years in this process, and it's time to see some movement, I believe. And so, if we see, if we see no movement, after we've, after they say they're going to clean the property, then we'll, we'll talk with council and we'll move forward as, as advised.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four oh eight concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal, fifteen twenty one Cedar Street.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh eight. Any further discussion among the commissioners? Des, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
All righty, item N, deliberate and act on resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal, one oh eight Pickles Avenue. Mr. Riley?
This is, this is another property that, if Kevin, if you would start the pictures there, mostly it's vehicles that's on the street. There's, there's some mattresses and, and some debris that needs to be cleaned up. The fence, the, the issue with the fence and the black material that's been placed on it, was it, was, it was an, an effort to shield what's behind that, but we still have all the vehicles on the street, broken windows, sitting on blocks, motors, so that's the kind of stuff that we're asking to clean up in this, in this, in this particular incident.
All righty.
And I hate to ask you to read this again, but.
Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero nine, a resolution concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal. Whereas John Pachetti and/or Brenda Abeta own or are in possession of property located at one oh eight Pickles, Raton, New Mexico, eight seven seven four zero, and whereas the property record on file with the Colfax County Assessor indicates ownership of the property by John L. Pachetti care of Brenda Abeta, and whereas on or about October nineteenth, twenty twenty one, code enforcement officer George Riley sent a letter to John Pachetti care of Brenda Abeta notifying them that the property located at one oh eight Pickles, Raton, New Mexico, is in violation of the city of Raton ordinances as they pertain to nuisances, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley did not receive any response to the October nineteenth, twenty twenty one letter, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley sent a first notice dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty two to John Pachetti care of Brenda Abeta, notifying, notifying them of the violation of city ordinances and asking that the owners remedy the situation, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley did not receive any response to the March fourteenth, twenty twenty two letter, and whereas the city of Raton code enforcement officer George Riley sent another letter dated May twenty May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, notifying John Pachetti, care of Brenda Abeta, that the property is in violation of the City of Raton Ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to the May twenty-third, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two letter. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent another letter dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty-two to John Pachetti, care of Brenda Abeta, that the property is in violation of the City of Raton Ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And whereas City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any responses to the October twenty-first, twenty-two letter. And whereas City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent another letter dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to John Pachetti, care of Brenda Abeta, that the property is in violation of the City of Raton Ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to the April fourteenth, twenty-three, twenty-three letter. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley personally inspected the premises and observed an accumulation of rubbish, trash, refuse, litter, junk, and other abandoned materials, metals, lumber, or other things, unsheltered junk, abandoned vehicles, conditions which provide harborage for rats, mice, snakes, and other vermin. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley personally inspected the property and observed buildings or structures which are in a dilapidated condition that are unfit for human habitation are kept in an unsanitary condition that is a menace to the health of people residing in the vicinity thereof or that a present or more than ordinarily dangerous fire hazard in the vicinity where it is located. And whereas the City of Raton Ordinances provide for remedies and penalties for the violations of its ordinances regulating public nuisances and found statute subsection ninety-four point oh one to ninety-four point nine-nine. And whereas New Mexico statutes grant to municipalities such as the City of Raton the power to require the removal of dangerous buildings or debris, see statute three dash eighteen dash five, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. And whereas pursuant to the statute, a resolution must be passed by the City of Raton Governing Body and served on the property owner, occupant, or agent in charge of the property. Be resolved, one, that the property owned or occupied by John Pachetti, care of Brenda Abeta, located at one oh eight Pickles, Raton, New Mexico, eight seven seven four zero, is hereby declared a dangerous building and/or premises as defined in the City of Raton Ordinances and New Mexico statutes that pursuant to the provisions of statute three dash eighteen dash five B, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, copy of this resolution shall be served on the owner, occupant, or agent in charge of the premises. Three, that the owner of record as set forth in this resolution and pursuant to the provisions of statute three dash eighteen dash five C, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, shall within ten days of receipt of a copy of the resolution or of the posting and publishing of a copy of the resolution commence removing the building, structure, ruin, rubbish, wreckage, or debris, or file a written objection with the municipal clerk, asking for a hearing before the governing body of the municipality. Four, that the procedure set forth in statute three dash eighteen dash five, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight and subsection statute ninety-four point oh one to ninety-four point nine-nine of the ordinances of the City of Raton shall be adhered to and followed by the City of Raton Governing Body, passed, adopted, and approved this thirteenth day of February twenty twenty-four. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, I'd also like to bring your attention to the letter from the Fire Department and Emergency Service, Raton Fire Emergency Service. That's in agreement with this ordinance, this resolution, I'm sorry.
Questions, comments? Chief, you got anything to say? Go ahead.
I will move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine concerning dangerous building or premises requiring removal, one oh eight Pickles Avenue. Second?
A motion, a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine. Any further comments from the commission?
Mr. Riley, based of your determination, the vehicles is the issue.
On the Pachetti property, Pachetti Abeta property, yes sir.
In your determination, they're not registered currently?
None of the vehicles are registered or insured. The tags are all expired on the cars.
I see, okay.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion and a second, Des, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Mayor Sigata?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item O, deliberate and act on resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal, five twenty-four South First Street, Mr. Riley.
Again, this is a, a property located on, on five twenty-four South First Street. And Kevin, if you'd go ahead and show the pictures of the condition of the property, I'd appreciate it. The property is just, is just, there's, there's vehicles again outside the property. There's vehicles inside the property. And, and again, we've had an attempt to put some, some blinding material up where you can't see inside. But if you see inside the, the property, it's, it's, it's just you can't hardly walk through it. There's just so much fuel for fire, tires. I can't really tell you everything that's in the, that's in the, the property. But it's another property that, that's a, a dangerous property. The last picture that Kevin showed was a house. I believe it belonged to the Valentini family at one point in time. A gentleman just bought that house and it's completely redone, the outside and the inside of the property. So we're hoping we can approve the neighborhood. This is just down from the Raton Senior Citizen Center. People that come to eat lunch there or whatever functions they have at the Senior Citizen Center see this every day. People that come to events downtown that we have see this, this, this stuff every day. And it's just, it's just another property that I think that we need to move forward with a resolution to get it cleaned up. We've tried for two and a half years.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten. Resolution concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal. Whereas John Pachetti owns or is in possession of property located at five twenty-four South First Street, Raton, New Mexico, eight seven seven four oh. And whereas property record on file with Covas County Assessor indicates ownership of the property by John L. Pachetti. And whereas on or about October, excuse me, nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent the letter to John Pachetti, care of Brenda Abeta, notifying them that the property located at five twenty-four South First Street, Raton, New Mexico, is in violation of the City of Raton Ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one letter. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent the first notice dated May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two to John Pachetti, notifying him of the violation of city ordinances and asking that the owners remedy the situation. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to the May twenty, or twenty twenty-two letter. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent another letter dated February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, notifying John Pachetti that the property is in violation of the City of Raton Ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three letter. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent another letter dated April sixth, twenty twenty-three to John Pachetti, that the property is in violation of the City of Raton Ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to the April sixth, twenty twenty-three letter. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley personally inspected the premises and observed an accumulation of rubbish, trash, refuse, litter, junk, and other abandoned materials, metals, lumber, and other things, unsheltered junk, abandoned vehicles, conditions which provide harborage for rats, mice, snakes, and other vermin. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley personally inspected property and observed buildings or structures which are in a dilapidated condition that are unfit for human habitation are kept in an unsanitary condition that is a menace to the health of people residing in the vicinity thereof or that present a more than ordinarily dangerous fire hazard in the vicinity where it is located. And whereas the City of Raton Ordinances provide for remedies and penalties for the violations of its ordinances regulating public nuisances and found at statute subsection ninety-four point zero one to ninety-four point nine-nine. And whereas New Mexico statutes grant to municipalities such as the City of Raton the power to require the removal of dangerous buildings or debris, sees statute three dash eighteen dash five, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. And whereas pursuant to the statute, resolution must be passed by the City of Raton Governing Body and served on the property owner, occupant, or agent in charge of the property. Be resolved, one, that the property owned or occupied by John Pachetti, located at five twenty-four First Street, Raton, New Mexico, eight seven seven four oh. It's hereby, hereby declared a dangerous building and/or premises as defined in the City of Raton Ordinances and New Mexico statutes. Two, that pursuant to the provisions of statute three dash eighteen dash five B, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, a copy of this resolution shall be served on the owner, occupant, or agent in charge of the premises. Three, that the owners of record as set forth in this resolution and pursuant to the provisions of statute three dash eighteen dash five C, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, shall within ten days of receipt of a copy of the resolution or the posting, of posting and publishing of a copy of the resolution commence removing the building, structure, ruin, rubbish, wreckage, or debris, or file a written objection with the municipal clerk, asking for a hearing before the governing body of the municipality. Four, that the procedure set forth in statute three dash eighteen dash five, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight and subsection statute ninety-four point oh one to ninety-four point nine-nine of the ordinances of the City of Raton shall be adhered to and followed by the City of Raton Governing Body, passed, adopted, and approved this thirteenth day of February twenty twenty-four. Comments, questions for Mr. Riley?
And again, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind you, there's a letter here also from the Fire Department and, and Emergency Service supporting this resolution.
Any comments?
I do have one question.
Okay.
Mr. Riley, to your knowledge, is there any personal reason, health-wise or financial reasoning that these property owners are unable to clean up their properties?
I, I really can't answer that question. I, I have asked and, and, and we get a little bit done and then we go right back to where we were before.
Right.
So it's just been, it's been a nuisance issue that, that ebbs and flows.
But if that were the case, do we have a means of finding assistance for those? Any, anyone that might have that, have issues, health-wise or?
I believe we could, we could probably reach out to Housing and Urban Development with some issues like that, somebody if we're gonna have to displace somebody or something like that. Yes ma'am.
Very good, thank you.
Question, comment?
We've addressed these issues in some of the other larger towns that I've lived in by bright orange violation that is stuck on the, on the vehicles that are on the right of way on the sidewalk. That sends a signal out to the rest of the community that the, the code enforcement is actually doing something about it. And it also makes other people be aware that if I'm going, you know, if I'm gonna leave my vehicle out on the sidewalk there, I'm gonna get that same violation. And I just feel it might expedite some of this as opposed, I understand the, the dangerous building thing, but the stuff that's on the right of way, you know, that, that's a separate issue. We've seen this in other cities where they try to shield off the fence so that you can't see within, inside. It's a stopgap measure, but I, I think the stuff that is in the media view of the public right there on the right of way should be addressed a little bit more quick.
Well, and I, and I would, I would go on to say, even though we have some attempt to put, to shield the public from the view, we go back to the, the city ordinance estate. We can't have a junkyard in town and not licensed to do that.
I, I do like to possibly add, yeah, a sticker in vehicles.
Yes, it would, it would help. We, we have a lot and, and we've discussed how we're gonna try to move forward, hopefully on some of the vehicles. So far, I've been pretty successful with just issuing people that noticed that the vehicle's sitting on the street, the tires are flat, and the registration. And we've had three or four of them that have, have moved the vehicles and they may have moved them in the driveway, but the tires are aired up. And, you know, I can't do anything if a vehicle's sitting in your, in your driveway and the, and the registration's expired. But if the tires are flat and hadn't moved for a year, then it's a different situation.
I'd be happy to provide an example of the details. They have them all printed up for the city stating the ordinances. And then when it's stuck on the vehicle, it's, it's written right on there in sharp detail what time, you know, what time it was put on there, photograph is taken of it, and there's security details that you can't just tear them off.
Yeah.
And it says you have ten days to remove it.
That'd be great.
Something we can sure look into.
Or utilities on these two homes?
Some, some, some of these properties have utilities and some don't.
I'm talking about Pachetti's property.
Mr. Pachetti's property, and to the best of my knowledge, the property we're talking about right now, there are, there's no, there's no water.
I see.
I don't know if he has electricity or not, but I know that they haul water to that property all the time.
I see, so you don't know if it's occupied or not?
The, the building's occupied, yes. There's several people that live in the building, but they live there with no water on.
Okay, and so the one on First Street, it has all its utility, no?
The one on First Street, I don't think it has water on. I believe that, I believe the property on one oh eight Pickles is now rented. In the last four or five months, I've seen people have cleaned the yard in there some and I believe there's people living there. Both properties are occupied.
So Pachetti or either co-owner?
Yeah, Abeta, that, that's Mr., the Pachetti Abeta property, that's Mr. Pachetti's sister. Property's never gone through probate. And that's why it's in care of, of Brenda Abeta.
Any other questions, comments?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four ten concerning a dangerous building or premises and require removal, five two four South First Street.
A motion, a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten. Any other discussion among the commission? Des, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Mayor Sigata?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Item P, deliberate and act on resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal, eleven thirty-three Price Street, Mr. Riley.
Eleven thirty-three Price Street is the Trade Wins Mobile Home Park. It's a, it's a mobile home park that lies right behind Arby's and the, oh, the, I can't remember the name of the gas station, the Alta Gas Station. This, in the past year, we've had three fires. We've had three mobile, two mobile homes and, and a travel trailer burnt on this property for what reason, I don't know. This picture here, if you'd back up, Kevin, is a picture that had wire, chain link panels around it. There was about fifty dogs in that property and the feces outside was over a foot deep. The, the people have moved from there now. The dogs and, and the people have moved and they're now on Fifth Street. We have issues with the same thing there. All of these cars belong to the same lady. And, and we, we, we've asked them to find somebody to move the cars for them. You can go the next leg, Kevin. It's just a property that, that everybody that stops at Arby's or stops at, at the Alta Gas Station, they see this property. And again, they say, is this Raton? And that's not the image that we wanna present to, to the traveling public and people that come here for events and so forth. Not only that, it's just heartbreaking to see children living in this kind of, 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 of the structures, the, the stuff that's going there. I went through that park one day and I seen a lady slap a guy, a, a man slap a lady there and I thought it was gonna break her neck. Called the police department, they arrested him. But we've had a lot of, a lot of crime coming out of this, this mobile home park. So it's time to step up to the plate and, and get the job done, let's clean things up. And, and actually, we're not supposed to have an RV in a mobile home park. An RV belongs in an RV park and that's more of our city ordinance that needs to be upheld. So the condition of the park, as you can see, needs a lot of work and, and we would like to move forward with a resolution to try to get this cleaned up. And there's gonna be some people here that are probably displaced. We'll work with HUD or whoever we have to to see that we have a place for them to go.
All righty.
And again, I hate to ask you to do this one last time.
It's all right.
I promise I won't do this again for a while.
Almost have it memorized. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven, resolution concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal. Whereas Kerry Price, Wanda Miller, estate of Charles Miller own or are in possession of property located at eleven thirty-three Price Street, Raton, New Mexico, eight seven seven four zero. And whereas the property record on file with the Colfax County assessor indicates co-ownership of the property by Kerry Price, Wanda Miller, the estate of Charles Miller, care of Wanda Miller. And whereas on or about April fifth, twenty twenty-two, Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent a letter to Kerry Price, care of Wanda Miller, notifying her that the property located at eleven thirty-three Price Street, Raton, New Mexico, is in violation of the City of Raton ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And I'm just going to point out, George, that says Kerry Pierce in that.
I'm sorry if there's, if there's an error there. If we could correct that.
We'll need to correct that. Whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to April fifth, twenty twenty-two letter. And whereas on or about August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent a first notice to Kerry Price, care of Wanda Miller, notifying her that the property located at eleven thirty-three Price Street, Raton, New Mexico, is in violation of the City of Raton ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to the August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two letter. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent a second notice dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, to Kerry Price, care of Wanda Miller, notifying them of the violation of city ordinances and asking that the owners remedied the situation. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two letter. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent another letter dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, notifying Kerry Price, care of Wanda Miller, that the property is in violation of the City of Raton ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three letter. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent another letter dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, to Kerry Price, care of Wanda Miller, that the property is in violation of the City of Raton ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And whereas City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley did not receive any response to the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three letter. And whereas City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley sent another letter dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to Kerry Price, care of Wanda Miller, that the property is in violation of the City of Raton ordinances as they pertain to nuisances. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley personally inspected the premises and observed an accumulation of rubbish, trash, refuse, litter, junk, and other abandoned materials, metals, lumber, or other things, unsheltered junk, abandoned vehicles, conditions which provide harborage for rats, mice, snakes, and other victims. And whereas the City of Raton Code Enforcement Officer George Riley personally inspected the property and observed buildings or structures which are in a dilapidated condition that are unfit for human habitation, are kept in an unsanitary condition that is a menace to the health of people residing in the vicinity thereof, or that present a more than ordinarily dangerous fire hazard in the vicinity where it is located. And whereas the City of Raton ordinances provide for remedies and penalties for the violations of its ordinances regulating public nuisances found at statute subsection ninety-four point zero one to ninety-four point nine-nine. And whereas New Mexico statute grant to municipalities such as the City of Raton the power to require the removal of dangerous buildings or debris, see statute three dash eighteen dash five NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. And whereas pursuant to the statute, a resolution must be passed by the City of Raton governing body and served on the property owner, occupant, or agent in charge of the property. Be resolved, one, that the property owned or occupied by Kerry Price, care of Wanda Miller, located at eleven thirty-three Price Street, Raton, New Mexico, eight seven seven four zero. It's hereby declared a dangerous building and/or premises as defined in the City of Raton ordinances and in New Mexico statutes. Two, that pursuant to the provisions of statute three dash eighteen dash five B NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, a copy of this resolution shall be served on the owner, occupant, or agent in charge of the premises. Three, that the owners of record are set forth in this resolution and pursuant to the provisions of statute three dash eighteen five C NMSA nineteen seventy-eight shall, within ten days of the receipt of a copy of the resolution or the posting and publishing of a copy of the resolution, commence removing the building, structure, ruin, rubbish, wreckage, or debris, or file a written objection with the municipal clerk, asking for a hearing before the governing body of the municipality. Four, that the procedure set forth in statute three dash eighteen dash five NMSA nineteen seventy-eight and section ninety-four point oh one to ninety-four point nine-nine of the ordinances of the City of Raton shall be adhered to and followed by the City of Raton governing body, passed, adopted, and approved this thirteenth day of February twenty twenty-four.
And again, Mr. Mayor, if you would, there's a letter from Raton Fire Emergency Service supporting this resolution as well.
Any comments, questions?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four eleven concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal, one, one thirty-three Price Street with the correction in the third paragraph of the last name.
A motion, a second, to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven with corrections. Is there any further discussion among the commission? We have a question in the back?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I am one. I do own the trailer park. I do not own any of the trailers. I don't own any of the vehicles. All I own is the land and the duplex. I have tried getting them cleaned up. Ed here has tried to clean things up, and they just bring in more stuff. We tried the burnt trailer. We tried to get, we had a man down and cleaned things up. They called, they came down there, they jumped on the truck, they started throwing the things back off. They said, we're stealing their things. I don't own those things. The trailers are theirs. I have elderly people down there that can't fix their trailers up. I saw one or two, and yes, they're in bad shape, but the people are in bad shape. And we have tried, we've had numerous roll-offs. I have called George several times. Him and I have talked a lot. I've talked to Kevin. I don't know what the no responses was. But these people, they, some don't even pay their rent. I can't get rid of them. And just across the fence, there's people living in tents. They steal our water. I know it's a mess, and I don't know what to do.
We'd probably move some of the vehicle ourselves. We almost got arrested for it.
Attempted auto theft.
Yes.
I'm not going to go to jail. We got, we got George here doing what he's doing here, telling us to get it cleaned up. We're going to catch forty-two.
And the police are telling us we can't touch.
We're going to jail for moving their stuff.
So what do we do?
I think something we need to look at first and investigate further. Talk to council, see what steps we can take, George.
That's what I'm saying. I don't own it.
As far as the folks that are still living in the trailers and that, as George has said earlier, we can work with HUD and see what we can do to get them displaced.
Now, I do have a trailer down there now that is a mess. I know it. The boy went to jail. Within two weeks, people had went in and gutted it. And I mean, they take light fixtures, they take wiring, they take the toilets, they take everything. And here I sit, this messy trailer, and I don't know what to do because it's not mine.
Mayor, I would like to ask that we move forward with this resolution because it then gives us the teeth to move the cars, to clean the property up, and to make these people clean the property up. It gives, it gives us the tool, this is a tool, to move forward and not, not delay six more months trying to find, we will work with HUD and try to find a place to put these people if they have to be displaced. But we have to clean this up.
Can I ask a question on this? I appreciate your effort here, but in all reality, New Mexico has made it very hard to try to evict people, especially for non-payment or whatever like that. Here, several years ago, after COVID came into play, the laws got changed to in favor of tenants and tenant rights. So I can appreciate what Ms. Miller's going through. That's why I don't own a residential rental at all anymore.
I understand what you're saying.
The parties of these trailers, the owners of these trailers needed to be named in this, not the landowner.
The landowner is responsible for the part, for the property.
If she could get a landlord's lien filed on this stuff, but locate these people.
She would have to file an eviction notice on the people. That hasn't been done.
I, yes, I have. I've made, the Sheriff's Department has even delivered notices to them, and they're still there.
And that's why I say we need to move forward with this resolution because if we don't get this cleaned up, this goes to district court. The district judge then hears this case, and what the district judge determines to be done will be done.
But I'd like you to address my question.
Yes, sir.
Why were the individual trailer owners not named in this notice?
I notice, I give notice to the people that own the property. They're responsible for the people that live there.
The trailer is property.
They, they're responsible for the people they rent the property to, Mark. If they don't want them on the property, they just serve notice, and they need to go through their court battle with magistrate court and have the people evicted. It's not the city's responsibility to evict people off of private property.
You're not evicting. You're asking them to clear up, clean up burned-up property that they have left. Or abandoned cars for that matter.
So there's cars here, there's abandoned properties here, there's burnt properties here. We need to begin to clean it up, and this resolution lets us begin to do that.
And we have tried and tried. Yes.
Are you saying displace all these people?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. I didn't hear the question.
May I ask?
Why are you saying to displace these people? The city has nothing to do with evicting people. Isn't that illegal?
Under, under counsel, advice of counsel said to move forward with this resolution. That's, that's what we're doing here tonight.
We're trying to get burned, 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 two burned structures cleaned up and some vehicles, not move a bunch, displace a bunch of people who have made long lists.
People that are living in the RVs there are not supposed to be living in a mobile home park in RV.
The RVs are leaving with that video.
There's four or five RVs there. We've heard the same thing for two and a half years, that we're going to clean it up, Mayor.
We have been, and we've had, like I say, you can check with, aren't there roll-offs? We've had numerous roll-offs that we built and cleaned up. And people come from other places and leave. They leave mattresses and just, everything.
What went on before?
It's just piled right out there, and I can't keep up with it.
I have a question.
Mayor? We've got Commissioner first.
By proceeding with this resolution, does this not help you to help them?
Yes, it does. Absolutely. It gives me the right then to go over with the police department, say, we're going to, we're going to impound these cars, we're going to move them off here. And then have them, have them identify who the correct owner of the vehicle is. And if we have to, if we have to hold those vehicles according to law for so many days, and they don't come and pick the vehicles up, then we'll sell them above the caution. That's what, that's what our ordinance says to do. This is a tool for us to help clean the property up.
We had a letter from one of the persons down there that owned some of the cars, giving us permission to move the cars. Ed was chained up to one to move it off. They called the police, not them, but somebody called the police. Police came down there and said that that was.
Attempted auto theft.
Attempted auto theft.
That happened.
The police tore it up and put it in his pocket and said, we couldn't touch the cars.
I'm not saying that Ms. Miller and, and, and her employees have not tried to clean this property up, but I think this is a tool to help us. We've, we've also, I think there's a photo that you guys might have there of the water, the Alta parking lot. That was actually sewage water that from a sewage backup at that park, the, the utilities are bad. We have water leaks. We've had water leaks for over a year at the property. That actually leaks all the way down through the Alta parking lot and into the sewer, the storm sewer drains. It's just, it's, it's something.
And when Ed gets right on him and fixes them, he is.
All right, let's, let's speak in turn here. We have a question in front.
I have a question. Does the property?
Can we get your name for the record, please?
Okay. My name's Tim Curry. My question is, does the property owner collect rent on any of those trailers or people that live there?
We collect rent on the ones that will pay. Some have just quit paying, and they're still living there. And that's the ones I've tried to take to court, and it's went nowhere. And they're still living there. You just can't get rid of people nowadays. If they want to stay there, they stay there. The law's with them. And I started having trouble when the COVID started, and it was evicting some of them. And then they, the laws came in and said, you can't evict anybody because of COVID. And, and they have been there all, ever since then, not paying rent, and they're still there today.
And New Mexico recognizes water rights.
Yes.
Yes, they do.
And in part answer to your, your question, Commissioner, the statute is written to the property owner, the land property owner, the state statute. So that's why we don't have, they don't have the renters listed as the, the statute addresses the property owner of the parcel.
On the record.
Yes, sir.
Shane Young, Ms. Miller has said that she's had a couple of roll-offs there, but everybody else comes in and fills it. Couldn't something not be done in conjunction with the city so that we have heavy equipment over there, and a roll-off is delivered, the city could assist in filling the roll-off with at least the burnt-out structures that are down in issue of contention? That would begin the process of at least cleaning the area up. Second part is, in other cities, the Fire Department has a much stronger hold on, on the laws, and they can deem something an unsafe structure, regardless of whether a tenant has, you know, the squatters' rights or whatever. They're still not allowed to go into the property until it's made safe. And also, can Ms. Miller not give the police department permission to trespass anybody who doesn't have a lease or whatever there? And that would allow us to stop a lot of the vagrants going into there and basically squatting.
We're going to have to look into all of that and check with council and, and move forward that way.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could address you again, that's part, that's part of initiating this resolution, is so we can begin to do that.
Yes.
Those answers will come down the road, but we, the first step here is to pass this resolution, if you would.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say something.
Please state your name.
I used to be a volunteer for the Colfax County subdivision, leading the board for twelve years. Her husband, Miller, Bob Harris, title searchers, and myself, we did volunteer for the subdivision. And every time we carpooled, Mr. Miller would drop some of us off, carpooled. And I used to go to his, Mr. and Mrs. Miller's, where the trailer park's at. And that trailer park was clean all the time, all the time, no problems, I never seen nothing there. Now you've got these squatters, they live all over, they live in my neighborhood. My neighborhood's bad. It's getting bad. They have cars there, they know about it, Mr. Manchur knows about it, and they don't want to move them. But they gave me a citation from my little house that I use for storage, okay? I hurt myself, I hurt myself a year ago, I'm sure, but I can't do that much for them. I'm seventy-one years old. But Mr. Miller, she comes from a good family, guys. I've known her, I've opened the race up to these kind of people. It's not her fault, it's the squatters. You have to go to the squatter, arrest them.
Okay, Mr. Bustos, Mr. Bustos, nobody's saying Mrs. Miller's a bad person.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but just.
Mr. Bustos, I've got the floor, thank you.
Okay.
We're not saying that at all. We are trying to give us a tool that we can help and assist.
That's good.
That's what we're trying to do.
Well, I'm helping your child, I've been here.
I appreciate your comments. All right. Any other questions or comments? This time I would entertain a motion.
I think we have a motion in a second already.
Did we? It's been a while.
I know, it's the conversation.
Thank you. Des, could we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sigata?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Moving on to item Q, deliberate act on Resolution 2024-12, corporate authorization to change in-bank signature cards. Mr. Bustos.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a resolution that requests that Lori Chatterley, Mayor Protem, be added to the in-bank signature cards and Lindy Schuster be removed. In addition, Christine Piancino, municipal judge, should be added, and Roy Menfretti be removed.
Any questions, comments?
I will move to approve Resolution 2024-12, corporate authorization to change in-banks and signature cards.
A motion, second to adopt Resolution 2024-12. Any further discussion, other commission? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item R, city manager report.
Mayor and Commissioner, several members of the city went to the state's Capitol to participate in the New Mexico Municipal League events last week. In addition to our commissioners, I was accompanied by city engineer Jaden Welch and director of public works, Jason Phillips. I believe we made a lot of valuable contacts during the aviation day, including a number of organizations involved in my former arena, the space community. Jaden and I had a brief introductory meeting with Representative Chatfield, and while there's some level of chaos being on the Hill, I think it proved to be a positive lesson for all of us. The Big Rocks, with Treasurer, the Records Consultants Incorporated will be here March 12th through 15th to conduct their annual fixed asset inventory. Michael Ann will be preparing a schedule for each city department. With the police, the city will be deploying the telescoping cameras this week. The chief gave me a brief training premiere on how they work and their pretty cool technology. Fire, the department is preparing for the testing hydrants around the city for the summer, and we had a briefing today on the process. In public works, we are focusing on issues at the airport with the state of an old fuel spill. Both the city engineer and director of public works are responding to inquiries from the state and federal aviation authorities. Engineering, we are in the initial phases of the assessment of the underground railroad tunnel. Water has been drained and inspections are occurring. Within facilities, we have an HVAC issue at the visitor center, and we're in the process of obtaining quotes for the repair. With the clerk, again, we would like to remind all Ratoan businesses to renew their licenses. The grace period expires March 15th, and businesses will be subject to a late fee after that. Economic development, the economic development director has been reviewing zoning and code enforcement records. While the planning and zoning boards meetings, we are trying to clarify many of the boundaries within the city with their limits and their accuracy. In mentions and dispatches, this week I would like to recognize a non-city employee, Dr. Ken Erickson. Dr. Erickson is a folks visiting fellow from the University of South Carolina doing research in anthropology and agriculture out in Folsom, New Mexico. Again, Dr. Erickson is not a city employee, but he has volunteered to be the chair of the City of Ratoan Education Working Group. We're forming this working group to look at both education and workforce solutions for the city and county, and we'll meet with the city commission and county commission later this spring to discuss the working group's findings and recommendations. And finally, some closing thoughts. During the last election, there were 3,224 ballots cast out of a total of 7554 eligible voters here in Colfax County. For the general election, the vote back in 2020 was closer to 5,900. That still leaves over 1,600 votes left outside the ballot box. As I was at the legislature last week, I wondered how those 1,600 votes impacted both what was happening and what was not happening on the floor of the House and Senate. While it may not have been enough to change any election, I wonder if the number of missing voters may have fired a warning shot over the bow of our elected officials to pay attention to what is going on in our part of the state. Make no mistake, I'm not a politician. I'm a bureaucrat and one that wears that title both with pride and with great expertise on our system of government. If we here in the northern part of the state do not start thinking and acting as a group, we will never be more of an afterthought to those who represent us in both Santa Fe and DC.